January 6, 2025. Welcome to the Westminster City Council Study Session for January 6, 2025. Thank you for joining us. We thank you for coming and would like to remind all in attendance that our meetings are subject to the rules of decorum that are posted inside the chamber doors. These rules are in effect while all meetings are in session as well as during breaks and transitions between meetings. We want to be sure all feel welcome and remind all that there is an expectation that no attendee shall disrupt this meeting and that threats and intimidation are prohibited. No attendee shall engage in audible expressions of support or opposition for the speaker's signs and placards are prohibited and all attendee shall remain seated in the seats provided, not in the aisles nor shall the doorways be blocked. City Council reports. Counselor, is that it?
No, ma'am.
Counselor, I'm just looking forward to the new year. Counselor, come here.
I just wanted to publicly express my thoughts with our canine Rudy. I think we all share that, but I wanted to give a little moment of silence for Rudy.
He will be missed. Counselor, Ireland?
I was on the Chamber of Commerce YouTube today and...
I watched you.
You did?
And I'm not a robot.
I give a shout out to you. Anyway, it was good.
Counselor Demont?
Nothing for me.
Mayor Protem?
I disengaged for three weeks, didn't engage until yesterday. And I did do a present for me to me. Nobody ever knows what's under the tree when there's no, it just has my name and nobody. So anyway, I got a new sewing machine, so I'm excited and, but I had to wait three weeks to use it because I had other stuff going on. So I used it yesterday and it's exciting. Also, the 23rd of December, I had scans. The 27th of December, I met with doctors and again, no new cancer. Cancer that I have in all the spots are shrinking. And from October, when I started the trial to today, the doctor said he sees 18% shrinkage in what I have left. So he said he was happy. I said, if you're happy, I'm ecstatic. So nothing new for me until February 3rd, when I go through scans again. So it was a good, good time. Do you have any questions?
I have a very brief report this evening, Mayor, before we begin our study session, regular items. Thank you, Kate. The next slide. So for tonight, I want to recap what we have on the agenda. First, in your packet and in the public packet is an information only item from me, and that is regarding the city's snow and ice policy overview. So this is in response to some questions and feedback from city council. This also came up during the recent telephone town hall. So in the packet for this evening is a review of the city's current policy and practices around city snow removal. And that will apply, or it will cover how we remove snow on arterial streets, those that are ours, what CDOT's role is with respect to those CDOT arterials, and then what our practice is today with residential street cleaning. So if anyone has any questions about those, happy to answer those tonight. And we can do follow-up work on that as well, depending on council's interest. For tonight's agenda, we have three items. The first is a review and presentation by our acting Parks Recreation and Libraries Director regarding the draft Parks Recreation and Libraries Vision Plan. So we'll run through where we're at with community engagement and feedback and what that draft plan looks like. And I do want to know, it was a very conscious decision to include all of the community engagement and feedback material that made the packet tonight very heavy and deep, but we felt that was really good to get that into public record and have you all have that information because it has been quite a process of engagement.
It was good to read.
Okay, great. Mr. Otzelberger will walk us through that tonight. And then next, we have two concept plan reviews, the first of which will be the concept plan review for the West 136 Avenue Walmart Monopole. And that, one of the things that you'll hear is that will very much help address some of the lack of cell phone coverage in the area. The reason that's coming before you tonight as a concept plan review is because of the height. This one is a really big one. And so I don't want to, you know, keep it very factual for you. This will be the subject of that first one. And the second concept plan review is for North Ridge at Park Center Senior Housing Project. So John McConnell, our planning manager, will walk through both of those for us tonight. Next slide, please. This week, we do have some evening meetings, first of which is on Wednesday, January 8, and that's the Youth Advisory Panel. That starts at 6 o'clock right here at City Hall in the Colorado River Room, and that's the room that's downstairs. Next will be on Thursday night, we have Parks Recreation, Libraries and Open Space Advisory Board Meeting, and that's from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. And that's at the Westminster Sports Center. So that one is not at City Hall, that's at our sports center. Next slide, please. For our next meeting, which is next Monday night, January 13th at 6:30 PM, right here in city council chambers, there are five items on consent agenda, and that will be followed by a post-meeting study session, which will be mostly devoted to budget presentation. So really getting in right at the beginning of the year with city council and start talking about the budget. Next will be an executive session, two executive session items. The first will be a discussion of the city's Woman Creek property, and the second will be a series of three sessions on personnel matter, and that's the quarterly check-ins for the city manager, for the presiding judge, and for the city attorney. That's all I have for presentation this evening, Mayor. You can, the public can always reach me directly on my phone, 303-658-2003, or at my email, And of course, follow us on any one of our four social media platforms. That's all I have.
Any questions for the city manager? All right, first up, Parks, Recreation and Libraries. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Protem, City Council, City Managers, Eric Otzelberger, Acting Director of Parks Recreation and Libraries. And I'm here to talk to you this evening about a massively significant effort with the draft PRL Vision Plan. And our purpose this evening is to provide some high-level information and seek your feedback and also kick off, this is our final phase of public engagement running through the whole month of January. So there is time this month, and as the city manager mentioned, this is a very thorough, voluminous effort with a lot of information. So if you have other thoughts over the coming weeks and want to share those, we still have that openness to do that. I want to start with some thank yous. A thank you to the over 3,500 community members and stakeholders that have provided input into this plan, a very, very significant engagement effort. City Council, our ProSLAB Advisory Board, the Youth Advisory Panel Inclusivity Board, we're going to be having touches with those advisory boards this week as well on this plan. I want to give thanks to our key team in Parks Recreation and Libraries, Alex Reeves, our operations manager, Tim Lockmeyer, our recreation manager, and Blake Ramsey, our Parks and Horticulture Superintendent. They've really done heavy lifting for the department. We have our, two of our consultants with us this evening, Taylor and Brian. Taylor Broihill is with Logan Simpson and Brian Trustee is with Pro's Consulting. They've done a tremendous amount of work. Also, on our consultant team, Rethinking Libraries, who you saw, we had a study session not too long ago on that. Want to thank Rob and Janet. And then ETC, who does the city's community survey. Ryan from ETC did very specific survey work related to this effort. So it's been a collective, collective effort. And with that, we'll get into it here. So the city of Westminster's Parks Recreation Libraries Department, it's kind of a big deal. And the National Recreation and Park Association believes that as well, three-time gold medal award winner. That's for the top Parks Recreation Libraries Department in the country in its class. PRL lands are one-third of this city, one-third of the 33 and a half square miles. It's a big part of what the city does. You see some G-Wiz numbers, impressive numbers up there, 63 parks, seven rec centers. Of that 15%, open space, that's 3,817 acres. Our 1.7 million trail users enjoying our 126 miles of off-road trails, over a million visits to our rec centers, $12.5 million in revenue. So it's, the scale of this department is impressive. So why are we doing this? Well, this was a specific directive from the city's 2023 strategic plan. The last time the city did something like this was in 2009, and that was just Parks and Recreation. So it's been 15 years. This is a massive and impressive effort with a lot of resource and expertise sent to bear. Just the culmination of data collection, existing conditions captured, you know, all of our assets, the thorough engagement, market analysis, benchmarking, demographic trends, recommendations, and actions. You know, we don't do planning just for planning's sake. There are 125 explicit actions that are contemplated as part of this plan and as a tool moving forward for the next decade plus, this can really help policymakers, staff in developing recommendations around budget, capital improvement program, goal setting, prioritization. And this coordinates with other plans as well. You know, if you look at a lot of the work Blake and his team have done with irrigation and sustainable irrigation operations and water saving, you know, that integration with the sustainability plan or the comprehensive plan. So this is really, really a useful strategic resource for the city moving forward. And this is a fun slide. Lots of engagement, maybe second to Andrew Spurgeon's comprehensive plan update effort. I personally haven't seen a project with as much engagement as this. And it's worth noting, a special thank you to Andrew Spurgeon, who was technically the project manager who started this off upon, you know, bringing the comp plan home. This engagement really started in 2023, focus groups, surveys, polls, open houses, one-on-one interviews, meetings in a box, interactions with city council and advisory committees. It's really been a comprehensive and I think thoughtful effort, and we're in the last month of that and one more community open house to go. And at the end of the presentation, we'll get to the next steps, but very proud of this sincere and thorough engagement. So with recommendations, there are a few, few high-level items. This first one with planning areas and maintenance hubs, well, I'll talk about at the very end as we think it's a really cool opportunity that we already have from an operational perspective in play to make the best of what we have with some efficiency and effectiveness gains. You see five fundamental functions there. So what is it really that this department is about? And through this effort and through feedback, that's where we landed. Level of service, we are at a point where libraries, city libraries are within a 15-minute drive of any residents in the city. We're 12 minutes to a rec center and almost there as far as a 10-minute walk to neighborhood parks or to park resources. So that accessibility is a big part. You know, as far as parks go, we have 2,337 acres of parks, which equates to 20 acres per 1,000 residents. That's a pretty impressive level of service. Open space, 3,818 acres. That's, that equates to 33 acres per 1,000 residents. So, you know, we're, there's, there's some slicing and dicing within the plan related to community parks, regional parks, neighborhood parks. But overall, I think the city has a lot to be proud of for its existing level of service and try to build off of that. In the plan itself, and especially with the work of the team here, really boiled down goals and objectives to these, these five overarching items that you see on the slide right here. Now, within and underneath these goals and objectives, because these, these are flying at a pretty high level. Appendix J, one of the many appendices and, and, you know, Appendix J is important because that has the 125 action items that are contemplated, you know, once again, not doing planning for the sake of planning's sake, but how can we operationalize and use this going forward to help engage around with policy recommendations and resource allocation? So these, you know, based on that community, what the community wants, this is, this is where we landed. And it's worth noting, too, Parks, Rec and Libraries, especially Parks and Recreation, one of the few areas where we actually generate revenue for the city. And over the last five years, our average revenue recovery, taking everything, all the operations into account, is 35%. That's 13% higher, oh, the ghosts are in the machine, 13% higher than the NRPA, that's the National Association, the average. And our number at that average 35% over annual basis in the last five years puts us in, you know, right about the upper quartile of agencies. So that's, I think, a testament to the team and, you know, balancing between the community needs and accessibility and also being able to sustain our operations. So what did the community say with priorities? What you see on the slide here are some facilities and amenities. There were a couple methodologies that were employed here. Through survey work, there was this thing called priority investment rating that looked at the importance placed on certain amenities by residents, individual respondents, and then how many valued it. So it was sort of a two-factor exercise. There was a separate exercise that looked at 35 different types of projects and secured both quantitative and qualitative community input. A lot of the guidance was around financial viability, need, and benefit. And a common theme and is kind of reflected in these items here is improving and expanding the system. An expansion might be trail expansion. Not, not to say that there can't be new things, but just for a rough order of magnitude, a new neighborhood park these days at Westminster standards is in the neighborhood of eight to 10 million. An outdoor aquatic center, which was ranked high as far as community interest, 30 to 37 million. And a rec center, which was also something we heard of in certain parts of the city, 75 to 85 million. Our current capital budget is in the neighborhood of six to eight million per year. So, you know, there are a lot of good ideas and good things, but it's just, you know, and with the city being in approaching build-out, it's just, how do we balance taking care of what we have while still trying to leverage some opportunities for new things? On the rec program side things, this just talks about facilities and amenities, but some high-level things on programs we heard from the community, community events was our number one for as far as desire for more, outdoor skills and safety courses, how-to classes and workshops, maybe we can enlist the mayor for her help with that, outdoor adventure and winter recreation. So those, those were high-level. And then, and then the team also looked at market potential and this thing called the Market Potential Index. And two interesting items that from just a market potential floated up were tennis and mountain biking. So implementation, the theme is make, make the best use of what we have and take care of what we have. A good, a good example of this is we currently have a little over 79 acres of dedicated public land through developments over the years that theoretically, let's just say, what if there was a desire to convert them to neighborhood parks? That would, would get us closer to perhaps some, some goals for the amount of neighborhood parkland per residence, but just looking at maintenance costs today, it takes about $4,000 per acre to take care of a park. Open space is about $1,000 per acre. So when we get into this active passive sustainability, you know, these are all things through budget processes and prioritization that we have to be mindful of. Personnel priorities, we were literally meeting today on ideas to repurpose existing resource within, within our existing allocations to do more on outreach and engagement. You know, we've heard very loud and clear with a community-first approach and it's possessed, community-first approach. So we want to walk the walk with that. And in partnerships, we're, we're in process right now with Highland Hills on... And in partnerships, we're in process right now with Highland Hills on renewal and revision of our IGA, in discussions with Westminster Historical Society, we'll be engaging Jefferson County Library soon. So really, a key theme in this plan is leveraging these partnerships and maybe some alternative revenue ideas are ways we need to be thinking into the future. And this was what I mentioned on the previous slide, something that is more of an operational decision that we're, the teams in process with deploying right now. And that's where putting planning into action is looking at a district approach. And don't take this map as the end-all, be-all, but the concept is four different districts. A good anecdote that I heard from a staff member is, so you may or may not know, our open space staff is housed out of the Browne property that's 100th and Alkiere. So real situation, we get a complaint with the Tanglewood open space that's way up in the northeastern corner of the city. Someone has to drive up, take care of the issue, and that's a lot of deadheading, you know, on the way back. So, you know, we've, there's some good with having a macro approach, but we think we can, under the guise of making the best use of what we have, make some operational changes to make our money go a little further and have a little more accountability and ownership with certain areas of the city. So next steps, seeking your feedback this evening. However, this evening isn't an end-all, be-all, and this is really our final phase of engagement around this plan. I will be talking to the Parks Recreation Open Space Libraries Advisory Board on Thursday, Yap on Wednesday, Alex will be talking to the Inclusivity Board on Wednesday. We, next week, will be opening online review of the draft plan for anyone to provide comments. We'll have a physical open house at City Park Rec Center, 4:30 to 7:30 on January 29th. We would respectfully request that any comments or questions you have, submit them to us by the end of the month. And then we would be seeking both with the PRL Vision Plan and then the Library Master Plan that you heard about several weeks ago, that's a companion to this, but also a little standalone, too. We would seek to present those for your ultimate consideration and action in March. And with that, I'll open it up to questions or feedback.
One, I just want to say how excited I am that we have this plan. I remember looking at the 2009 one, it was basically just all the parks and when we're going to maintain them. And this is far more comprehensive and a first for the city in terms of looking at all the things, all the needs and how they relate to one another and focusing in on a more inclusive approach, a more equitable distribution of amenities. So I just have a few questions. One is, or a couple are focused on the districts that you're establishing, but when, in terms of metrics, are using them to collect some type of performance measures or is that the break, is the breakdown useful for that? Do you see utilizing this to look at a greater, like, performance measures or, I don't know, see how we're doing with distribution of amenities or?
Mayor Protem, that's a really good question. We've been taking baby steps with doing asset management, and I want to give credit to Blake and his team, I mean, especially with irrigation and resources. I think, yes, looking at some of our operational metrics and learning, you know, how we can best use our resources within that district model, you know, simple things as just more efficient and sustainable, you know, less soft dollar costs that aren't going toward productive things, you know, like I said, that deadheading with driving and what have you. And, you know, really looking at what, that level of service, you know, with, you know, from a staffing perspective, because, you know, with parks, we have an interplay between FTE, temporary staff, hourly, the seasonal work, too. So I think, and but some of this, and this is where this plan is really a 10- to 15-year horizon, because as you may know, we don't, we don't have hubs for maintenance facility. And so, you know, we have the Park Operations Center, we have the Browne property, you know, Stanley Lake is kind of its own thing. So we, you know, how do we station and manage that resource? I think there's a lot of learning to be done, but both performance metrics and asset management and using, you know, what we have spatially with our GIS resources and our data tables to help understand and guide that will be important.
Okay, some more performance measure, metrics based on operations versus the actual programming and utilization of facilities. Okay. And so my other question about that was, how might that impact what we might want to do for public works? Or do we have these hubs or, you know, locations? I know we've talked about in the past just how difficult it is to, you know, do snowplowing or something, have to be all over the city. So I'm curious to know if we've thought about that in our?
We're willing to share lessons learned with others. I mean, you know, the concept as far as assignments and ownerships, I mean, there, you know, there are, you know, a hub, we have assignments, right? Whether it's beats with the police officers or code enforcement or routes. But as far as that, that ownership around the assets and the asset management and just kind of learning, learning more on the metrics, you know, gaining more familiarity, you know, I'm very excited to see where this, where this goes. I mean, I, there's no doubt in my mind, we can leverage some effectiveness and efficiency, but that's where the multi-year, you know, we don't have a magic wand to say, okay, tomorrow we have four different mini maintenance facilities. So how do we use the resources we have while trying to, you know, kind of like with waste management, you have transfer stations sometimes or have that nimbleness in the field? So, yeah, I think there are a lot of lessons learned will be able to be shared and used to make decisions as we go forward.
The other train of questions I have is more on the uses. And one thing I may have missed in looking through the documents, it was, there's a lot of information. So, but do we have a comparison of the demographics of our users against our overall citywide demographics? Are we representative?
That is a good question. I would, I would ask for your, if you'd indulge me with patience, I could follow up on that with our team, our technical team that's been in the details. I mean, we have through rec track or system, you know, I mean, there was a lot of-
Probably have that data.
User, you know, as far as socioeconomic data, I'd be happy, we can take a look at what we have. And so the question is just, does that, is it more so like on the recreation side of things?
The utilization of the facilities and the programs, recreational programs. And mainly because there was discussion in the plan of where we are regarding the pricing of our programs and our household incomes potentially rising, but I know we're quite a diverse community. And so I just worry if we get too comfortable with where we're pricing things. And you mentioned earlier that, hey, we're capturing more revenue than the average city. So does that then impact our, the people who are able to use our programs and facilities? And we do talk about the geographic distribution, that we have a few more rec centers in the southern portion of the city, but not as many parks. But if people can't access those, because usually they require some type of fee, then are we actually, do we have an area that has both a deficit and ability to access as well as just park space?
Sure. Well, and Mayor Protem, to provide you and council with good, the best information we have, we can put our heads together and share that. And also share, you know, we do have a pretty cool scholarship program, and no one has turned away certain programs for an inability to pay. So it may, it might be good to share some of that information. And also, yeah, because we have some demographic information and just kind of, but I don't think the analysis say, okay, does this really reflect the city population as a whole? But we can, we can return with that information.
Yeah, and if the scholarship program is meant to achieve an outcome of more access, then if we're not measuring that, it would, I think it would be helpful to be measuring that. The only other question I'll have is just the partnerships component. You mentioned a few, and when we are laying out our capital improvement program slash wishlist, I would just, again, love to see partnerships that might derive from, you know, other communities that are adjacent to us. You know, everybody's kind of in the same boat in our, in our general area. We're all kind of these first and second ring suburbs, and we're aging and we're not doing new, but things change. And if there's any way that we can coalesce and combine funding for something new, whether that's with, you know, it's Broomfield or Arvada or Thornton or North Glenn, I would love to see us exploring that. And also, school districts. So we have three, and are there facilities and some synergies that we can identify in facilities in particular? We have, I know we do share parks, but is there a need, again, that we can utilize multiple funding sources, not just rely on our own?
That's right, Ellen. Well, thank you for trying to optimize assets. I appreciate that, I'm into that. So we've had people in North Area complain about not having a rec center. Have we gone to Broomfield and asked them about using their rec center?
Yes, so Tim and I have a date in the not-too-distant future with our friends in Broomfield. And what we're looking at is as far as something that's executable now is a rebate program for Paul Dirda. So with the North Area, and that's a theme you saw in this vision plan, and council has had previous discussions about, okay, the North Area and recreation needs. As you know, our wonderful partners at Highland Hills have a wonderful facility, 120th and Federal, the Country Club Development there, but of course, no pool, no court sports. I mean, Paul Dirda seems to be the go-to from a realistic geographic area. So, and Mayor Protem, to your point, you know, this is where, okay, in partnership with Broomfield and trying to make it easier for our residents, you know, a rebate program is a lot more cost-effective than us trying to go alone and then competing for a limited market share when, you know, you have Highland Hills, you have Lifetime Fitness, I mean, you have North Glenn's facility in that corridor. So there's always that market question, too, that when do you oversaturate the market? So?
Well, I know Lifetime is very expensive now. I've lived in the North Area, not my whole time I've been in Westminster, but I did take my kids to the Broomfield rec, to the Broomfield tennis, to the Broomfield. Because basically, I bordered Broomfield, and I'm more a part of Broomfield when they were growing up, and the rec center, and our rec center was so far away. So I feel what those people are feeling, but yet I just had to fork over the money to do it. So I don't know what the rebate's going to cost the taxpayers to do.
So for the differential between a resident versus non-resident for Broomfield for family would be $200 per year. So some of this, I mean, it's a little piloting, a little trial. I mean, we can't say, you know, how much it would be. I mean, I would have a hard time envisioning that usage of this rebate would exceed $10,000 in a given year, but just kind of opportunity costing that with-
Building a rec center.
Pursuing a new capital facility or, or something to, you know, we want to be mindful both for soft dollar costs for the city and with our partners, too, something that's fairly reasonable to administer. So we have a little more work to do, but we've heard that request loud and clear and working to execute that on fairly short order here.
So would it be any Westminster resident or just the ones with the Broomfield zip code?
Well, we've had that discussion, and at this point, we're leaning toward any Westminster resident. And that, you know, that, I'll admit, you know, feels a little risky, because it's like, oh, are we, are we competing with ourselves or kind of creating a disincentive to use some of our facilities? But what we've heard, you know, primarily, it is an issue of geography. So practically speaking, who would utilize that? So we, like I said, we still have some details to work through, but we're very sincere in making something happen, of course, assuming we get, you know, some level of cooperation with our peers in Broomfield.
So would they, we would offer the same to Broomfield residents at our facilities?
Well, we've yet to have that specific conversation with our, you know, so we, we're right now operating what's in the sphere of our control. And as you see in this plan, you know, there is some legitimacy to say, okay, at least from a city recreation center standpoint, the northeastern area is underserved. Not that there aren't other things, but from a city provided. So for us, it's like, okay, here's something with a rebate we can do. Now, might Broomfield, it could be like college. I'd love to talk to them about reciprocity, but I'm not, I'm not sure what level of interest will be there from them. But, you know, we're gonna, we'll do our best.
All right. Also, you're talking about revenue stream. Have you had ideas of how to make, I mean, we're at 37%, that's great, but can we do better?
Yes. It's a tightrope type of question from the standpoint, you know, it's a balance in the public sphere versus a Lifetime Fitness where, you know, it's a corporate entity. You know, we do, we're mindful of, you know, these are nice quality of life. I mean, there are services that make Westminster Westminster. And in the spirit of many competing needs with a full-service city, you know, that revenue recovery helps us provide more. However, I mean, just simple point, saw end-of-year figures for the golf courses today and share more soon, banner year, banner years for both golf courses. So, you know, with that type of service, looking for, working towards that 100%, almost 100% revenue recovery, but then on the other end of the spectrum, libraries. That's not really the model. Or like with recreation centers, I mean, when you start slicing and dicing revenue recovery, City Park Rec, high level of revenue production, but pools are expensive. City Park Fitness, you know, that recovery, you know, can get up in that 60-some percent, 67%. So, yes, I mean, I think, you know, we are mindful of how can we enhance that revenue recovery? And that's where with the team that worked on this, it was very helpful, because it's tough sometimes to ask that compared to what question. But for what it's worth, we can, we can state with a straight face that, you know, we're in that upper quartile when it comes to public agencies with revenue recovery. Now, is that saying that's, that's great? Well, it's kind of a balance of values.
So you also talked about libraries. Is that a separate, when you bring it to us, is libraries separate from the rest of it?
Yes, so there's, within this plan, it's a companion, so it will be a standalone plan that has specific actions and more specificity than you see, you see and hear. But that's where, when Amy Rota, our libraries manager, talked to you a few weeks ago in study session, you know, that was kind of going over that. And so there'll be more, more specifics in that final product.
Well, I'm the only one that's talked about privatizing the libraries. Have you thought about it?
Well, and was it Huntington Beach?
Yeah, I'm going to talk to them.
Okay, so I, after you brought it up, Counselor, I did a little bit of, and I'll admit, it's just cursory research, but it sounds like they went back to a public model?
You think they, oh, they did?
I think they did, so.
I would call them and talk to them, though.
Okay.
Because I know that there are those that have.
Share about Adams County and Jeffco.
Eric, share about Adams County and Jeffco, what they have, and how they get paid for, with any single library and the Jeffco.
Oh, millage, property tax millage. So, so that's.
They're not free, people are still paying for it.
We're, we're, and that's, and that's what's unique, you know, we, we are very unique as a full-service city in providing those library services because the traditional model is, you know, it's, it's, it's a line item millage with, with your property tax and, you know, being roughly 70% sales tax funded, and that's where, you know, you have high-revenue-producing programs, you know, like golf, that theoretically, in the greater good, help offset costs of programs that, that don't have that revenue capacity. But the privatization model, the, the challenging thing with that is, when it, when it comes to, what I've seen, when it comes to saving money, the cuts are usually on the personnel side of things, and, you know, that can lead to some challenges with actual service provisions. So, you know, never want to take anything off the table, and, and looking at, you know, alternative models is good, but yeah, I, I did, you know, because you piqued my curiosity last time.
Thank you, I'm used to looking into it.
Yeah.
What else? Counselor Suddy?
Thank you, Eric. This was great to hear. A long time coming. We've asked, and we've seen, and we've heard, and I think there have been many community members that have been, who have said that, hey, I got contacted, or they put out a survey. So, I do agree, I think your engagement on this has been excellent, so thanks for that. I have a few questions. Mayor Protem, once again, had some amazing suggestions. I think the pricing and partnerships was really good, and along those lines, related to distribution, equitable distribution of assets and resources, I imagine, and I haven't read the plan yet, I'm going to read that this weekend in detail, but what were your findings related to the distribution of, so whether it's trees, for example, geographically? You know, we've asked about, we know in historic Westminster that there are fewer trees than in other city, parts of the city, for example, right? Or programming by age and by income, senior programming versus youth programming. We know there's gaps in youth programming and senior programming in our rec centers, things like that. Is there a good analysis on that? What were your findings? What have you seen in terms of how we're distributed?
So, one, one of the tools that the consultant team looked at that I think will, will give us a lot to think about and noodle on as far as how we can address in the future, is using CD-PHE, so Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment, has more or less a disadvantaged or communities matrix of sorts, you know, sort of trying to bring some objectivity to, to resources. And so, there were, in, in the plan, a few callouts to some areas of the city where certain assets might be not as prevalent as, as others, so that, you know, from a taking care of what we have or looking to enhance things, that, that, that's an area. You know, there's some really good analysis in the plan, looking, looking at total usage and then year-over-year, looking at, at changes in, in some of our programming. So, that's where, you know, it's, it's, it's an art sometimes, but also trying to respond to the demands that are out there with, with, okay, where, you know, movie nights, like for, for kids. I mean, that, that was something that saw the biggest year-over-year increase in, in a cheer camp, and so like trying to provide relevant opportunities, but then also, as, as was raised, being mindful of what are the ca, barriers to entry and, and the pricing, and how are we leveraging the scholarship program? So, I think both on the facilities and, you know, with, with that CD-PHE tool, that's more on like capital infrastructure, you know, that gives us some things to be mindful of as we're bringing forward in the future, operating and capital proposals for you. But then on the programming side of things, you know, I think we have some other tools that will help us, you know, evaluate, because there, and there were some dedicated focus groups that actually our, our partners at the Community Foundation helped with in, in reaching some non-traditional stakeholders or hard-to-reach stakeholders. So, that was another element of the plan that I think, you know, the team did a really good job of bringing that to bear, so it, it, we, we can say that, you know, we, we did take purposeful efforts to try to, including people experiencing homelessness and, and others, so we, we tried to really wrap arms around it.
But are there specific findings that you saw that stood out to you?
You know, other than being mindful of taking, and, and we have something in process right now, take, take Historic Westminster and the England Park. So, so that, that is a potential transformative project. The, the challenge of cobbling, you know, and, and we'll, we'll talk more in a month as far as the complexities of revenue sources with parks, rec, and libraries, but cobbling together six or seven revenue sources to try to, you know, we have about 6 million right now, it's like, but it's six to 10 million to do a neighborhood park and trying to do more, more of a regional park. So, so I think there's some specific capital opportunities. England Park is a good example that comes to mind, that, once again, translating this plan into action, using this to help frame and bring forward decisions for your, your ultimate decisions on, on budget matters, I think is, is where, where I see opportunity to leverage this.
So, those 150 actions, I assume that those findings translated into actions in that list, right? So, there will be, they will be in there, but also, how, how are you planning on prioritizing those actions for purposes of then inputting into the budget process for us to then approve? Are you planning, I guess is the question?
Yeah.
On prioritizing it before we see it, or are you expecting us to then look at that and say, hey, here's where we think?
Always open to your feedback, but this, my, the intent of this document, I mean, this, this is, this is so rich and so massive, and it's really intended like with a 10 to maybe even 20-year, I mean, you know, best practices or sort of a 10-year cadence with this sort of plan, but, so when you see those 125 action items, there, there's, even as ambitious as we are, we're not going to get all those done in five years. You know, it, it really is that longer view, so it is, I think the onus is on us to, to prioritize in accordance with your respective strategic plan, what, what are those top-tier priorities? An example that comes to mind right now, forestry, and you mentioned trees. Literally was meeting today about a repurposing opportunity to, and trying to do more to, to take care of what we have with the urban forest and, and make some enhancements, so that, that was something that kind of jumped out to me, that with, with some modest investments, we can, we can improve our overall situation. So, yeah, really, really through your strategic planning and annual budget processes, I think that's where you will see those 125 action items come forward. I mean, some of them are operational. I mentioned, you know, a lot of sustainability efforts already underway and continuing. You know, that what, what the team's doing on the irrigation front is remarkable. I mean, as far as, you know, saving precious resource and saving costs, I mean, that's, that is good money after good, so I think that, that's an area where, you know, on the sustainability front, we'll really be focusing on with, with some future proposals.
So, then we should expect a prioritized list that we think then digest and talk about in these planning sessions coming up?
Yeah, through, through, yeah, and, and through budget proposals themselves, because as, as you look at this, this plan, it's, it's, it's so impressive but so gigantic. You know, it, it's, it's, it's the cliche metaphor of eating an elephant, you know, you have to take, you have to take bites, but I, but I think we can get there, and, and with your, your overarching policy guidance, make sure that we're, we're prioritizing items accordingly.
Those 445 statistically valid responses from the survey, that was the online survey? Or was that a, was that mailed?
It was mailed.
Was that both?
And, and, and I know the, our, like ETC, who, you know, does the, the community survey, and, and when we're talking about, you know, being representative of the community, you know, they made an effort to try to make sure they were trying to reach folks that maybe haven't historically responded, you know, to, but yeah.
Do we know the distribution of the responses geographically?
I, I don't know that off the top of my head, but I could follow up with Ryan and, and get that.
Yeah, can you please? That'd be great. And then, related to the revenue generation, I'm, I'm not a fan of raising revenues for the sake of it, but I am a fan of introducing new services that could, or products, if you want to call it that, that can bring in more revenue, missing services that we know that can help fill the gap from recreation or whatever, like tennis, for example. But when you think about the, the generation, are, so we heard all summer about the, the parking fee potential at Dog Park, right, or the parking lot. What are we going to do? Do we make it Westminster only, et cetera? Are some of those ideas in there somewhere where, so have you captured all of that, consolidated all the various ideas that have gone through the last two years in this council?
So, Brian Trustee with Prose Consulting did a tremendous job in, in the operations and revenue section of, of identifying any, any, any potential revenue strategy that would be practically feasible for us. It didn't, it didn't get so granular to say, hey, parking fees at Westminster Hills, and that, and that's something, you know, both parking, we'll, we'll be wrapping our arms around, you know, the best strategies out there in the coming year through, through a, through a separate effort. But if, if you look at one, one of the many appendices, I think Brian did an excellent job based on peer analysis and just kind of market analysis, giving us a menu of options to consider that, once again, practically speaking, would be proposed and considered as part of annual budget processes, because they, they, they would represent policy decisions, you know, especially when, when that revenue's involved.
So, that would be one of those actions, then, in your list, that you would then need to do further refinement on and bring that back to us?
Yes, yeah.
So, is, is tennis in there, the tennis center?
Tennis, especially with that market analysis, that, that was something, you know, that, I mean, tennis is in all the different needs analysis, but from an unmet or the market potential, tennis was, was one of the highest.
Youth programming, where, where, where did that fall?
You, very, very high, both from existing and, and future demand, and, and, yeah, that was, that was high. And, and, and that's where the balance of, you know, and it, and it's called out in the plan, like, like some of the camps, I mean, enrollment maxes are met very quickly. So, it's like, okay, there, there's, there's capacity there, but what's the balance to provide those services? So, so yes, there's some, some really good data on that in there.
Last question.
Oh, yes.
Childcare. Where did, what were the gaps found related to childcare? Was the question asked in the survey, everything about childcare? What, what have, what pops out to you related to that? In recreation, you know, we offer, and we offer programming, all those sorts of things.
Well, preschool, very strong program, you know, recent, teen recently made, made some enhancements, some investments at the MAC to kind of enhance some of our offerings. So, preschool, and then when we talk childcare, it's really that preschool enrichment, you know, couple hours, so it's not, it's not childcare per se, but it's that, that couple hours of early childhood education. You know, you read most economists, you know, that biggest return on investment is early childhood education, but, you know, what, what we do, it's, it's an enrichment sort of program, high demand, meeting, meeting targets, is, is there the potential for more? Possibly, but yeah, a very strong area, and, and also, there, there appears to be a little more market there as well.
Was there a question on that in the survey?
Preschool was, was included, yeah, yeah. And, and once again, it was, it was framed in that kind of our, our current offering, and then, of course, you know, with, with drop-in use of the rec centers, I mean, we have, we have drop-in childcare for, for individuals, but, but not, not, you know, we're not in the daycare or infant care business.
Thanks.
I'm sorry, Counselor Demond, I missed you.
You're fine. Couple of questions and a little bit of feedback, or my, my view, like, I think it would be good if the rebate was both ways, if, if you can, I mean, it's obviously up to them, but when you talk about are we robbing ourself, if, if that's a two-way thing, I mean, I can imagine, especially kind of really in your area, I mean, there's a lot of opportunity for Broomfield residents probably would want to go U-City Park, especially if it was, there was that kind of program. So, I just wanted to throw my encouragement behind trying to see how our partners feel about that, because I think that's mutually beneficial. I did have one question, so on your slide, you had the 1.7 million of trail visitors. So, when you, that number, what, what all does that include? So, like, I remember there was a lot of talk about numbers during the Dog Park conversation, and how many folks we thought we would see in a year. So, when I hear that number, I'm just curious, like, obviously, most of the Dog Park is trail, so what kind of users are we talking, and do we have that kind of granular data when we look at users?
As far as the demographic data with that, no, I mean, you know, with trail counters and, you know, it's, it's, it's a pretty, pretty high.
You're right on it.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's, it's more of just the physical steps, and, and, and of course, this is an imperfect number, like, like, like many of the numbers, but just to give that kind of magnitude. But yeah, I mean, we, we don't, we don't, we don't, unlike, you know, because of registrations and things like that, you know, with rec facilities and programs where we have a little richer demographic information.
Is there a breakdown like per area, perhaps? Like, when you do those counters, that we could see, you know, there were X amount in this time period at this park, X amount? I mean, that might be useful just to understand, because I'm just trying to grasp how we kind of look at what that annual user is, and, you know, are there parts of the city where there's more of those 1.7 million versus other parks? I think that, I mean, I don't think would drive some of our decisions to know, like, or where are areas that maybe are being more utilized and ones being underutilized.
Yep.
So, that could, you could follow up that, but then the other thing that I wanted to kind of just make part of the conversation, like, we talked a lot about partnerships with other government entities or public entities, but I mean, there's a real back and forth with the private ones. Like, in the example I would use is when Vasa opened on Church Ranch, I could give you 20 people who said they stopped going to Westview because of the cost to go to Vasa versus the cost to go to Westview. And I don't, you know, I don't necessarily have the solution for that, or, you know, what the right balance is, but I, I would imagine that we're looking at that as you kind of go through these, because, I mean, we are fighting for the same, same folks at some level, and in my mind, these kind of programs are supposed to be for folks because it's a, a public service. And so, if we get to the point where the private service is cheaper or better than our service, like, you know, are we, are we in the right business, I guess? And I'm, I'm not suggesting that we get rid of our, our parks and rec, I'm just, you know, when we look at programming, how are we competing with the private market? Because I think it's really the same question when we look at like how we are working, you know, close to Broomfield or Apex or, you know, ourselves. So, just wanted to bring that up because I, you know, that was something that I thought a lot of in the, our area. So, it would also be interesting to see what our usership was at Westview as those, you know, as Vasa came online, and I think we have some other probably examples where you could look at maybe even the Swim and Fitness Center when the Vasa over there opened. I don't mean to pick on Vasa, I'm just trying to think of ones that, that opened that are kind of in that price demographic that, you know, I was hearing folks say, hey, I'm not going to go here anymore because it just doesn't make sense. Wasn't necessarily because they didn't like our facility, but then the other two things I wanted to kind of, at least, one is a question. When you look at the districts, you had thrown out numbers of 1,000 per acre for open space and 4,000 per park. Do you see that being driven down as you kind of lay out those districts? And is that, is that a goal that we have in order to say, we think it costs as much per acre now, and these districts are going to make it 3,000 per acre, or whatever it is?
Yes, and, and that's, some of the, the good capital investments on the irrigation front could, could drive down, you know, with efficiencies that, that park maintenance costs. So, that, that's where, you know, that, that's to give you some, some context, because I think City Council in July was, was curious about, okay, just kind of rough order of magnitude cost, but that, that gives us a target to work for, and going back to metrics, trying to get that, that down, because it, it would be lovely to invest in more neighborhood parks. Because it would be lovely to invest in more neighborhood parks, but we just have to make sure that we can sustain that. And if, and if we can kind of get at that through some more sustainable operations, that would be good.
Yeah. And this, this is just my feedback on that, on a couple of other quick things. One, we talk a lot about working with the HOA. So as we look at those districts, I think that would be another opportunity potentially to use our, our buying power to help our HOA entities across the city or even those that, you know, aren't HOA but have needs. Then, you know, when we talked about the fire station and how they were looking at building their stuff out, this is kind of to Mayor Protim's point, just making sure we're looking at those different opportunities if we're going to look at facilities. I always know like areas for the police to stop where there's a safe space that's secure for them to be able to take a bath and break. You know, they, they have less spaces, but there's just an example of one and there, you know, or plenty of other places, I think, where there's synergies, whether it's equipment or, you know, you know, our human staff. And then the last thing I wanted to, I didn't see a ton of it in there. There was mention about senior programming. When I just, you know, kind of, I specifically kind of did a key search on that because I was curious. Because as, you know, the population continues to age, as we know it's going to in Colorado, we're going to need more of the senior programming. I know we have great programming at the MAC, but, you know, we probably want to make sure that we're pretty diverse in how we spread that out across the city. That specifically for me is one of those areas where we've talked a lot about the different transportation mechanisms. You know, like some of the work the inclusivity board did with the Senior Resource Center, you know, through COVID and stuff, they used to have a very robust transportation program. And that, actually, they sold all their buses to that program that you've been a big advocate for. That, the fact of that concerns me about people being able to even get to those kind of programming. So I think to me that adds some weight to making sure that we have just our eye on the ball when it comes to our senior programming and having it at our facility. But otherwise, this is very useful and I appreciate all the work that's went into this. And I know you have a lot more work to do, but.
Councilor Carmelia?
Yes, thank you so much. I have had a lot of thoughts while we've been talking, so let's hope I remember them all. Just first of all, thank you for all the work you've done. I'm really excited we're doing this after 15 years. This is huge. So just another big thank you. Secondly, I just wanted to make note of some of the things that I saw in there, which was in the benchmarking study. I, it was good to see and for our listeners to know that compared to our neighboring cities, we excelled in areas like cost recovery and in program attendance and in our staffing. So I just wanted to highlight that because I think that's good for our city residents to know what we're doing well in. I do think in the presentation, I'm just going to mention, I think it would be beneficial for folks listening or watching to have had a high level summary of what was in the report, just so that, you know, we don't have to go online and dig up the document itself. Just of the overall analysis of the findings and recommendations would be helpful. But since that wasn't there, I made a couple other notes of items that I found. As you mentioned, there was market potential growth for areas in tennis, Pilates, mountain biking and art galleries and programs. And I just wanted to mention those because I'm really excited about those. That's fantastic. All of them except for mountain biking, that's not me, but that's okay. I'm just hoping we can, and I can be your person if you like, reach out to the North Metro Arts Alliance and try to bring them in and ask them for ideas. You know, if we really do plan on expanding those areas for TRL, how can we work with who we have right here in the city? So I'm just bringing that up in case they are listening as well for any ideas that they might have for expanding those programs. And then I also saw that we said the needs are greatest, as you said, in the Northwest and the South areas of the city. And so it was great to see the report is going to be focusing on upcoming opportunities in those areas. And I'm just bringing that again for listeners to know that that's, that is where we are planning to concentrate our efforts and our time. So that's really good to know, that we'll be looking for opportunities to further grow there. But that, for the most part, like you said, I think it's a really good thing that we're concentrating on what we have because we really do well with what we have. And the feedback I've heard so far from residents, both during my campaign this whole past year, is they are really happy with our open space, our parks, our libraries, we're doing well. So I love that we're concentrating and refining and doing better with everything we already do. So that's awesome. And I think that's the right track. Going back to trails and a little bit of what was already mentioned by Mayor Protim and a few others on working with our neighbors, I saw that there was a recommendation in there to expand the trail system, which is also very exciting, and expand those into completion to key districts or key destinations. I'm hoping that that includes shopping centers, just because, you know, I do believe that our trails, you know, they are great for hobbyists and for folks that want to be able to get to where they need to go by bike or by foot. I think that we should be able to do that throughout our city. So I just wanted to highlight that. But then I have heard feedback that for folks, especially on the North side, you know, they can tell the line where Broomfield takes care of one side of a trail and we take care of another. And so I just want to provide that feedback. You know, are we talking to our neighbors with the trail system maintenance and hopefully coming up with some sort of consistency in the care that we provide? And so I just want to mention that and hopefully we can do a good job of working with them and, you know, trying to find some balance there, either in the snow clearance or in the, you know, debris, et cetera. You know, just making sure we're consistent. Let's see. Okay, I think that's everything. I just want to say again, thank you. Overall, everything I saw in there was really achievable. So I think that's important too, that what we're doing is highly achievable. And so that's exciting. You know, we can make it, we can refine, we can do better than what we're already doing. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Good job.
These folks.
Great job.
With the connecting trails at our last NADA meeting, Carson Priest just said, there's some money out there. And if any of the cities looking at their maps and see some places that we need to connect, whether it's connecting ours or from us to Northland or Broomfield, there's money out there. So he's happy to work with anybody because there's money out there. You know, it just kills me for $6 to $10 million, the price take has gone up a part. Have you guys looked at? What else can we do to have a park and have a place for kids to play and families to be that doesn't cost $6 to $10 million?
I, I think this sobering financial reality, you know, the $6 to $10 million is based on historical status. Can we reimagine or redesign what a public space is or, you know, value engineering only goes so, so far sometimes? But I think, you know, that's where this sort of effort, that's, that's a great question there. And can there still be a public benefit from some of these places that, that were public land dedications a while ago that have been there and get some use out of them without them cannibalizing, taking care of the things we have? I think that's, that's a good challenge for us going forward.
It's really, we've got to think outside the box and not what we've always done. And there's got to be a better answer because I can't even express how I feel when I hear that money. Yeah. I love the partnership and whatever you're doing with DIRDA. And it's true with where I live, half a mile is Broomfield. And I don't know of rec centers in Broomfield that those folks would have or necessarily the ones in Arista that live there. So, I mean, there are maybe some pockets that, as you have conversations, and if it doesn't start at first, maybe over time, and they discuss with their people too, it'll happen. But I applaud you for taking those steps and figuring out a different way than $75 million for, again, something that's only going to get 35% back and everybody's paying that taxpayers' dollars. And do we really need it? I don't know how many people live in, I call it a finger, a long rectangle. But it's, it's so zigs and zags with, with Broomfield and us that that's a lot of money to spend for a facility when there's other options also there. So I applaud you for that. The report, I've, I've read it through once. I want to go back because it was fascinating and there's so much in there. And I know it is over long haul, just like downtown. When you start something, it's all not going to happen in the first two years, five years, 10 years. It's going to take a while. So I applaud you for that and thanks for your entire team. I've been at the Yappers meeting both times that and sounds like I'll see you again Wednesday night. But, and even those students that live, I happened to be at the table that had the rec center up in the North area. And two of the students live up there and just, they looked at it and said, well, that's crazy. Paul DIRDA is right here. We can ride our bikes. Why aren't you doing something there? So it was refreshing to know youth could see what we should be able to see and is there something that could be worked out? Thanks for all your work, everybody's work. It's great.
Mayor, I have one more question if you don't mind. How did you guys look, because this came up even tonight on my way in with a resident, in terms of keeping, this is more of taking care of what we have from a safety aspect, talk graffiti, talk homeless, challenges that we have that maybe end up with law enforcement. Is that also something that, you know, as you vision forward, that you have some ideas about new ways to avoid those kind of things?
Yes, and intelligent design and just having those public safety considerations at the front end in the design effort. Because I, I think despite good intentions at times in the past, that sort of lens hasn't always been there. And I, I know one, one that's a staff favorite for a couple of us is just which, which side the restrooms are on at the nature playground. And I know from officeing at 73rd and Wilson and going on my, what I call my old man walks on the Little Dry Creek Trail and seeing enough challenges myself, it's like, oh, with a, with a simple design change, we, we could have reduced costs and made things a little more tenable for our public safety partners. So I think, you know, moving, moving forward, it's, it's that, that example of making sure that that's in the front end, because that's another part of trying to manage these costs of taking care of these, these facilities too.
Yeah. I mean, because one of the other things that I was thinking in this goes across two different areas. One that was brought up to me is some challenges with the new tennis court at Kings Mill. But over time, when we had our public safety town hall, the, my whole table was from the Carolbutts area. And so they had talked a lot about like, well, why don't you just lock it up at night? And I mean, so that sounds easy enough, but I think that the challenge might be who locks it up at night, who unlocks it at night. But I'm just curious, as you think through this and you, you look at districts and stuff, maybe that's an opportunity. If you have your staff more widely dispersed, that maybe that's part of the discussion. Because I, I don't think it would stop everything, but, you know, you know, parks are a place where people go hang out when things are closed. And that's not always bad, but it's not always good either. So, you know, just food for thought as I'm thinking through some of the stuff you shared that might potentially be opportunities to, you know, address those public safety concerns as well as just our general public property concern.
No, and with lighting, with visibility, with, with being mindful of that. And it goes back to Jane Jacobs and the life and death of great American cities. You know, when you don't have that activity and you don't have that activation, that kind of creates that place for some of those ongoing nuisance challenges. So, no, and Barb Godryta, our rec program superintendent, got to give her credit for who, who knew, you know, we've, we've got the little lower left-hand corner, the trapeze. And the trapeze hasn't solved all of the challenges in the Irving Street area, but, but, you know, that, that's an example of some activation that helps.
I also have a last question there. Thank you. I just want to say thank you so much for bringing up this topic, because this is something I deeply appreciate, is talking about design in prevention and crime prevention. And so I just wondered, I doubt we have anybody on staff specifically, but for our larger projects, could we be bringing in a consultant to look at things through a behavioral architecture lens? Because that is so important in long-term cost savings and in safety measures and preventing crime. I feel like that's something that we could talk about or think about bringing in consulting to really take a look at the city and the look of a design of a project before we get going.
Councilor, that's a great idea. And, and not, not to embarrass her, but, but you may also be intrigued to know that our landscape designer's husband is the police chief of Wheat Ridge. So she knows a few things. And as far as having some resources to leverage, leverage with that, I, I think that's something where we're making some steps forward to be mindful of.
That's great. Yeah, thank you.
And England Park is a good example of, and with our partners, the Historical Society, as we've wrestled with some challenges, you know, we're, we're at a point where we're not at finals for the, the construction drawings yet, so we can incorporate some things to hopefully, you know, mitigate, mitigate some stress.
One last thing I remembered, because I told them during my interview when we had that last year. Your staff does a fantastic job. I, I know we had 81 things on our list of what you do for the year. I know you have many more because of the programs within the buildings and whatnot. Some of the events we do are, are big, which means we have to have police, we have to have rooftop police in this day and age. We have costs that we don't think about. And I worry about burnout. And I, I just say that lovingly because they put their heart and soul, they believe in what they do, and none of them would ever complain. But when you have 81 back-to-back things, sometimes we're at things three times a week and it's not little things. It's, it's things to set up and tear down and have things ready and da, da, da. I, I, I just worry about staff.
And Mayor, I hear you. And Alex Reeves, to our operations manager's credit, we were literally meeting with that team this morning and we have some, some strategies planned for the year ahead, because here's another fun fact. No one at the city does more contracts than the special events team. You, you wouldn't think that, but, but it's like, you know, these events don't, I mean, when we think of all the vendors and all the logistics and getting into traffic control plans and what have you, it's, it's a lot of administrative and behind the scenes work, like just leading up to the event. So I, I appreciate that. And that's where it's, it's great to see this plan, the importance of those events. So it's certainly resonating and with, you know, over 85,000 attendees, but it's, it's a lot.
And it's not just your staff. It then goes into the police, the fire. I mean, every, it's all hands on deck. And it means some people are having to do extra and be away from their families. So I'm just concerned. We do great with what we do, but we don't, don't do everything. And I think it's okay to educate the public if something has to go. It's just okay.
Anything else?
One more. First of all, that was, yeah, is that spot on? Because not just, I mean, for everything she said, but then on top of that, there's also burnout on the other side where you do too much and the public starts tuning out. We have so many different events, we should do things really well that they want to go to. So I'm guessing you're tracking metrics, foot traffic and things like that for each one. But what my question was going to be, I think it was Councilor Carmelia, she had a really excellent idea. She framed it as a priority, but my question is more so, is that in the 125 actions on maintenance, actual maintenance of, you know, hedges and all, across the city, you've, you've heard the issues throughout the year. It seems like it's rising and we're doing less. I'm curious what the issues are. Is it a budget issue as to? But I know it was a vendor issue specifically, right? Now we switch vendors, is that correct? The citywide?
Yes. Yes. And this last season was the first season.
So is there a specific? So is there a specific action to do a better job of maintaining the lawns and everything like that and making sure things don't ever grow?
With the right-of-ways and medians?
All that stuff, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That is, that is, you know, it's the true number, we were comparing notes right before this meeting, it's closer to 7 million square feet of medians and right-of-ways. So it's, it's a lot. And that is one of those partnerships where we leverage a contract to try to make an efficient use of dollars, but, you know, and that's where some of the irrigation improvements and other things. So there's, that's, you know, while we think of parks and we think of open space, got to, there are several action items associated with medians and right-of-ways because that's part of what this team does as well.
Okay, so there is a vision on how to improve that?
Yes.
Yeah.
And some of that is wise conversion over time to, you know, and we know new laws on non-functional turf and just kind of, you know, goals, goals we have with conversion. So that'll be an important thing moving forward.
Thanks.
Again, thank you. Thank your staff. It's a great report.
Well, thank you. I'm just so impressed both with the staff team and with the consultant team and really giving the city a gift to really, really help make a lot of decisions and hopefully make a lot of improvements in the years ahead.
Thanks.
Thank you, Eric. Mayor, as we transition to our next item, I just want to let all of City Council know and our public here tonight and listening that there is a winter weather advisory issued for tonight. That's in effect from 11:00 PM till noon tomorrow, expecting three to six inches across the front range and in our city as well. And that we understand snowfall has begun. The winter weather advisory kicks in at 11:00. So we'll have a lot of snow and full accumulation is expected because the ground and surfaces are so cold. So this is not one of the ones where it will fall and melt for a while. So as it falls, it will start to accumulate. Just want to give everyone a heads up. Drive safely, everyone. Thank you.
So next up is concept plan review for the West 136th Avenue Walmart Monopole. And the next item is a concept review plan for the West 136th Avenue Walmart Monopole. This is a concept plan review. It is not a hearing on a development application. Its purpose is to allow City Council to learn about a proposed project in its beginning stages and provide feedback to the applicant on City Council's general impressions of the proposal. In accordance with Westminster Municipal Code, concept plan reviews occur after city staff complete the pre-application review for a proposed project, but before staff perform a technical review for the project. Technical review, which involves an official application for the ODP, PDP, or amendment thereto, will occur only if the applicant chooses to move a project forward after its concept plan review. As part of our review process tonight, city staff will provide a brief introduction and then the applicant or his representative will present an overview of the applicant's development proposal. City Council may then ask questions of the applicant and provide the applicant feedback on the proposal. City Council comments on the proposal are gratuitous in nature and are not binding on City Council, the Planning Commission, city staff, or the applicant. And I almost added to that we may ask questions and whatnot. We might also do cartwheels. I mean, all of us know we can't talk here on street from 144th to 128th. So to get that problem solved would be very wonderful.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protown, City Councilors, and Happy New Year to everybody. So I'll start with the staff overview of this. And the project location, you're all probably fairly familiar with, and that's the Walmart located at 136th Avenue and I-25. The subject site's outlined in red here. The proposed cellular installation would be located here where the white box and the blue line is showing it is in the rear of the Walmart, existing Walmart building. The property's zoned, planning unit development or PUD as well as all surrounding properties. The subject property is, has a comp plan designation of commercial. And just the land to the south of it is designated public, quote, public quasi-public, sorry. So the proposal includes a 35-foot by 65-foot walled area. And this would contain mechanical equipment in addition to a 150-foot tall monopole. The proposed location is landscaped area to the south and rear of the Walmart. It's adjacent to the rear access drive primarily used for loading purposes for the store. To accommodate the cell site, a portion of the landscaped area would be removed and a retaining wall constructed into the existing slope. Additional landscaping would be planted around the perimeter of the cell site for screening. Adjacent to the cell site and to the south is vacant city-owned property and, as I said earlier, is designated public, quasi-public. So for the applicant to pursue development of this property, they would need to process preliminary development plan amendment and official development plan amendment. And a, I'm sorry, this slide's incorrect, it's not a comp plan amendment. So just those two applications, my apologies. So the preliminary staff analysis identifies that the cell site was originally proposed by the applicant to be located on the northeast side of the Walmart supercenter between the building and the surround, and the southbound I-25 on ramp. Based on staff's discussions with them, staff requested that the location be reevaluated and reduce both visual impacts and impacts on the function of the adjacent multi-use trail. Visually, the original site would have been highly prominent from both Interstate 25 and from West 136th Avenue, which serves as a gateway into the city. The original proposed site would also have required an access easement crossing the existing public multi-use trail to allow for maintenance. In fact, the gate accessing ground-based mechanical equipment would also have opened onto the trail. So staff recognized that this was something that would not be a desirable for this project and again, work with the applicant to arrive at new location we're showing you tonight. The location of the proposed cell site on the south side of Walmart building will be screened by the building as well as the existing grade, which requires the structures to be built into the existing berm and landscaped area. So if you're familiar with most cell sites, the equipment's surrounded by a fence of some type and it's usually pretty visible. In this location, there's an existing substantial landscape berm there that this can be built into. So at least the base of the cell tower will be very screened. And there's not a lot you can do to screen a 150-foot pole, but the trade-off is we need cell service up there pretty desperately. So for the concept plan review tonight, notice was provided with six signs on the property. There were notices in the newspaper as usual and over 400 notices were mailed to adjacent property owners. If the applicant chooses to advance these applications, the public will have an opportunity to provide input during the review process. The first opportunity will be accommodated by the city-required neighborhood meeting during the review process, and that takes place between the first and second rounds of technical review. The second and third opportunities will be at the public hearings of the Planning Commission and City Council. It dates later to be determined. So I have our applicant here, Jake Hamilton, here tonight. Jake's going to go through his presentation and answer any questions that you have. And if you have no questions for me, I'll go ahead and turn this over to Jake.
I see no hands up, so welcome.
Hi, am I guiding the ship here or is somebody else?
You'll advance the slides. She's going to get it all prepped for you.
Hi, everyone. Up or down, I assume?
Right or left or up?
Okay.
Your choice.
Project location, that was already described. Most of this is pretty basic and honestly, just regurgitating what John said pretty much. It's a basic request, we're looking for cell coverage in the area. This particular area, if you look at the coverage bill, we'll get to here actually, let me not get ahead of myself. Let's just follow up in the slides. The location is here on the south side of Walmart. As John alluded to, we had originally had it, I think, over more on the east side, I believe it was. And now we're on the south. I was out there today. There is a berm that covers visually anyway. There is a fire lane right there, but I believe if we're not protruding into the parking lot at all, that's fine. It's just for fire passage, it's not for parking or anything. This is the tower. On this picture, it shows three future carriers. That's obviously speculative at this point. Right now, what we have is Verizon and Verizon's nine antennas, including 5G, 4G LTE. Everything else kind of explains what John already talked about. 155 feet would just be to the top of the actual lightning rod, 150 feet to the top of the top antennas. And the steffing here would be essentially a screen wall that matches the tower, matches the skyline. We usually go with a kind of a light gray color. That's just, over time, been seen as the most compatible with the surrounding environment, shows the least, in other words, people see it the least. That's obviously up for interpretation depending on where you're at, what type of stealth. There are fake trees out there, obviously. There's other structures, but with the height that's needed here, the landscape, it doesn't really make sense to have a tree. They don't generally get over 150 feet in this area. There's not many trees to begin with and the ones that are there, 25 feet, 30 feet. With that said, it's, you know, we've done it before and some people like it, some people don't even notice. I think the goal here is to keep it as stealth as possible, considering the height, considering the antennas. If we did a screen wall around the antennas, that at least kind of, I don't know, makes it a little bit more uniform, doesn't, your eye doesn't really go to any specific object. It's just a, be three screen walls, nine antennas, three sectors. Basically, it's three sides, each one has three antennas. So that's the three sectors. And initially, I'll keep going here, this is the existing service coverage. So when evaluating whether we need a site or not, I mean, you guys have made it seem fairly obvious that there is a coverage need here. I'd say more of a capacity need because as I-25 fills up and some of these streets fill up, more post-work time, 5 o'clock, 6 o'clock, 7 o'clock, the coverage needs change dramatically based on the time of day because you have people obviously traveling through the day and to their work spot. And then the commuting times is when the biggest need hits for a lot of these highways and interstates. And that's when a lot of the calls are happening, people are on their phones, passengers, of course, are streaming only. And that's when the network really gets taxed. So this site, I'll kind of change back and forth. This is the existing service, this is the proposed service. When you're looking at the map here, the purple is the really poor coverage, poor outdoor, which if you got poor outdoor coverage, that means you have essentially no indoor coverage. And you shouldn't have many spots with poor outdoor coverage at all. And some of this, I believe, over here to the, I think that's area to the west here that actually is covered, it's just not showing because of the map that we're using. The better, more relevant part here, I guess, would be the eastern part. The western part is not relevant to this map. So for, this is before, this is after. That green area is kind of filling up the zone, so to speak. It's sometimes hard now to capture the need in coverage maps because a lot of the sites are technically covered. It's just a capacity need. In other words, data streaming, people using their phones for other than just talking, 5G needs. So sometimes you won't see it filling up at all, but this one you do see quite a bit of coverage being filled in. And that's what this site really is. There's surrounding sites, five or six that are about a mile away, but in this center area, it's kind of the convergence of all those sites and there's just not very good coverage. It's weak. Once people are in their cars and using the phones, as has been alluded to, there is some weak spots. And yes, this is just Verizon now, but if the tower's there, the goal is to acquire other co-locators. That's always from SBA, that's the company that I represent. They're a tower builder, infrastructure provider. Their goal is to get as many carriers on there as possible. We can't tell them to be on the tower, but generally if it's up and the tower's there, there'll be a co-location opportunity. Site overview, this is, you guys have already seen this, is your basic bird's eye view. This is kind of getting into the police area that we discussed and a brick enclosure. And this one is kind of unique because there's an existing berm. So that area would be retaining walls and then we would have an architectural brick that would match the Walmart essentially on the inside. And I was just out there, like I alluded to earlier, you really can't see this unless you're driving behind Walmart. A closer out view, we do have, since we do have to, I believe, remove two trees, is it? Something, either two or three trees we have to. Per the code, I believe, we have to add double what we remove. So there is added trees and there's a landscaping plan that's already been done that shows exactly what trees are coming out, what are being added. And I believe this is the last page. It's, oh, sorry, this is before the Sims, but this just shows future providers. The only one we're doing now is Verizon. And if we get into the Sims, this is an existing view. And you can see up in this upper left, it's a little bit small here, but that would be where it's taken from, so the S would represent the site. And then you have the view on I-25 where the red, the dark red is. And then this is what you see essentially, so go back to the existing and proposed. Granted, these are going to change based on where you're looking at it from. And we have three views here. Now you have the dark red, you're looking at it there from the south. And existing, proposed, so existing, proposed. Lastly, we have the dark red view there that's just adjacent to the Walmart. And you can kind of see Walmart there, that would be the southeast corner that you can slightly see if you're standing in there, and that's our equipment area. So this one, you get to see the equipment area and the tower. And you can see it's kind of built into the berm there. Lastly, you have this perspective rendering, which is just kind of a 3D look of the potential site. Shows some of the trees that are added, they're now actually red, they're just highlighted for our use. We have pine trees, the northern red oaks, obviously the monopole, the equipment area. And you know, the equipment is not highlighted inside the compound in this. It's more just for an overall site view. And that's it. Questions?
What is the process of getting a cell tower? Did you go to Walmart and ask if you could put it there? Because I, because it's so close to city land, I want to know why the city didn't put it on our land instead of Walmart's land. Because you're paying Walmart, right?
Yes.
You could have been paying us instead.
I don't remember exactly how that went down, but I know that was, there was a discussion about the property and the city's property there. There is a creek there, I believe there's a flood plain. And that, I think that's one of the reasons that that berm is actually there is because of some of that. So I believe that that's been discussed. I can't recall the exact conversation that happened, but I know from SBA's perspective, we have a master lease agreement with several large corporations. So that's basically Walmart target. If there's a need in the area, our immediate target is going to be whoever we have that MLA with because those are pre-negotiated terms. Otherwise, to try to get a deal done with a large corporation, it can take 10 years. It's such a massive process. And these MLAs are standardized pricing nationally so that a company, SBA, Crown Castle, American Tower, all three of the big, large tower builders, they have these pre-negotiated leases essentially. So that just, and the reason this one took a while to move though from that east side to the south side is because we had to get approval from Walmart. So sometimes even to make small moves, it is a little bit time-consuming with them. But that's- But that's the best I can answer question. But I know that, um, that was discussed and there was some talk of that, but that I believe that land, um, wouldn't allow it or something to that effect.
I'm looking at the coverage. It looks like it improves more in Portland than Westminster.
That's, that would just be because it's probably filling in a void there. It's providing.
I know there's voids in Westminster in the northern area.
Right.
Like, I mean, trails, you can't even get a signal in that area. You can drive through and get not a signal.
If you.
So that's my concern. Is that it, did it do anything for that area?
Well, it does for, I mean, obviously you know where it's at and then.
Up there.
Is there a radius? Uh, I, I assume the, the signal intensity would be the same in a, a certain radius. It's hard to see that, I think.
Yeah.
Green on the map and the change in the green color.
It does. I mean, it's meant to, because we have another map that we provide as part of the submittal process and that shows five of the nearest sites for Verizon and how that connects. Obviously I can only show what Verizon does as far as improved coverage. And, you know, I could say that this is going to make coverage better for all of Westminster, but that's obviously not the case. It's going to make coverage better within a mile of this site, most definitely. And even if it's not showing on here as dramatically better, just by nature, this providing those nine antennas are spread out evenly essentially, oh, three hundred and sixty degrees around that pole. It's going to improve coverage. And what it's going to do is make those other sites will have less stress on them. So then those sites will work a little bit better because then they're not being overtaxed by trying to overcompensate for this area that has poor coverage. It's the whole network works in unisense and once you put a site on the network, it will improve the other sites. I don't know how much, you know, how dramatically, but this is the best way of improving the network. You know, there's small cells and there's right-of-way sites. There's a lot of micro solutions that just aren't nearly as good as a macro solution like this. When I say macro, I just mean your large basic cell tower that you see with the large antennas on it. Around the tower, there is a lot of different solutions, the distributed antenna systems, which are the small kind of, uh, indoor sites for a mall or for a shopping center. You have the small cell sites, which we use along the utility routes, basically will put small antennas on utility poles. But this macro site is by far the best solution for capacity in particular.
Looks like we need another one at Nor, at Target up there.
Right. I don't know who has MLA with Target. I mean, there.
That orchard gets no signals either when you're sitting in a restaurant in there.
The northern part of Westminster there.
Yeah, orchard shopping center. If you're in a restaurant in there, you can't get a signal.
How far is that from here? What is that? Maybe two miles?
Well, this is a hundred and thirty-sixth, this is a hundred and forty-fourth.
The orchard is?
Yeah.
Oh, it'll help then.
It will help.
Yeah, for sure. Cause this is a hundred and forty-fourth right here. Sorry, I'm not super familiar with.
I will be up there to test it out.
Are you Verizon?
No, I was. I was eight, I'm AT&amp;T. I guess I'm going to have to go back to Verizon.
Yeah, I mean.
Call AT&amp;T and tell them.
I wish there was a way you could like test drive.
Right.
The network. I'm not aware of that, but it will. This will definitely, one forty-fourth is right there. And again, it's hard to see because according to this, you're not seeing a whole lot of degradation in the network up there right now, but that doesn't account for increased capacity. So yes, it will make it better there for Verizon subscribers.
Okay.
Answer, Camille.
Uh, how long does the project take from start to finish to put this up?
Uh, from a construction perspective or from the permitting perspective?
Oh, I guess I had in my head construction, but we'll have to take account into the permits as well.
I mean, the actual construction is a, can be a ninety-day process and usually is. It's not, once we have the building permit, it's just a matter of, you know, most of these are pre-assembled. The towers are, so they're craned, put together in spot, built. It's not incredibly difficult. It's a small area. It's not that difficult to bigger, the longer process is the zoning process. And, you know, that, we're looking at, we have this process and there was the, what was it? The OD.
You have a PDP, preliminary development plan amendment, official development plan amendment. And so the nature of this is, uh, is, is much smaller in scale as far as design and content in our development documents. So the PDP and the ODP amendments should be a lot simpler as compared to, uh, a brand new building of some sort or residential, commercial or whatever. Uh, we could likely get through the PDP and ODP amendment process a little quicker than we normally could. Uh, it does require your approval and the planning commission's recommendation because the tower exceeds the height limit in the current PDP.
Well, I'll just say, you know, I don't know if we want to do a poll or something, but I have a feeling if you need our help to push things along that might find that you have is, so, um, yeah, the best, that's good to know though, that once we, you know, once it says go, three months, that's fantastic. That's great.
Yeah, it's more the, the permitting, building permit process. I mean, the permitting process will probably take a year. I mean, that's just the reality. We're going to push as fast as we can, more or less, but even stuff comes up on our side too, where we have to get specs or something and it takes a while and then we have the permitting. I mean.
Yeah.
It's good to get started right away, basically.
Absolutely. Yeah. And I, I mentioned that only to say that, um, you know, twenty thirty is coming and that'll be the rollout of six G and so.
Right.
So we'll, we'll have a four-year benefit, which of course there'll still be customers, you know, using five G, but just that's.
And once the infrastructure's up, they're doing modifications all the time. So once the sites are up, they're constantly upgrading the technology. It may not look like it from a layman's perspective from the ground. But the reason the antennas can stay basically the same size and still accommodate, you know, a massive multiplication of carrier use, meaning we're streaming way higher definition stuff, are the capacity requirements are going up exponentially. People always think that we're going to get to nanotechnology and it's going to be small dinner plates powering the whole network, but the reality is it is getting way better and it is powering much more with smaller technology, but it's just that the need goes up so dramatically.
Well, I'm excited about it. Thank you.
Mayor Protim?
Um, I just had a quick question. You answered the color of the pole and what would be the best practice for that. Um, so glad to hear trying to choose something that'll be stealth or less visible. Um, the question I have maybe is actually for staff with, um, the PDP amendment, um, to get to the hundred and fifty-foot height. Will it be very narrow in terms of what can achieve that height?
Yes.
Okay.
Very good question. And, uh, uh, what Mayor Protim is asking is would we be proposing to increase the height across the board in the PDP? And the answer would be no. It would be specific to this cellular installation. The height would remain the same for all other buildings and future buildings in the same PDP.
Okay.
I, I want to say it's sixty feet or so, but I, I'm going off memory there right now.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Demak?
Just more along the same vein is that we just know in the past, there's been certain things that council's pushed back on that could be administratively changed. And I'm just wondering if this is an opportunity for us to rethink how some of these processes go. You know, this is something that we know that we need. Now that process is going to delay it, that maybe there's just an opportunity to look at it and bring something to council to say, you know, as technology advances, whether it's fiber or this. Um, you know, that maybe we could help streamline some of that stuff and, and, uh, deliver services to our resident.
Yes.
Also, is that it?
Can we just accelerate this? So, so if it's really a year, is that really, what, is it really one year?
We'll have to talk and see. I, I'm not sure what, what permit process you're, you're referring to. You, you may have permitting outside of the city for something like this, uh. No, I'm just, that's just going off of my experience of doing this for fifteen years and that's generally how long they take. When you have a conditional use permit, you have overlapping requirements. I mean, maybe not. If we can move it, we'll move it.
And, and we have the advantage of overlapping, uh, building permits and, and PDPs and ODPs and such as that. We have a, a way to get it through the system.
There's four total hearings already. There's planning commission, city council, this one, this is not technically hearing, I guess, but, but there's also one more for the PDP, right?
No. You'll, you'll just have two more hearings, planning commission and city council is the final decision.
And that's, those are basically back to back, right? Plan commission. Okay. Yeah, maybe not.
So then it should be shorter?
It should be shorter. Again, this is not, this is not, yes. I believe so, because this is not a brand new shopping mall or an apartment building or something. This is a very small change to an existing official development plan and preliminary development plan.
And related to the, I guess, your business model, I'm just curious related, so if this is Verizon, they're, they lease from you, right?
That's right.
Then do you then recruit other service providers? Or do you depend on just market forces? They just, do they come to you? Have you seen, I guess, to reframe the question, have you seen in the, in your experience, once it's up, it's pretty automatic that the others will jump on board.
Yeah, and they have, the SBA, all the Tark companies, they have heavy sales presence, obviously where they're reaching out to their respective contacts in the market. They need those extra carriers. They oftentimes don't make any money from one carrier. They're reliant upon additional carriers for that business model to work. So that's why they're trying to get any lead to get a tower up to justify that so that they can attract other carriers. Cause that's when they start to make money is when that each tower is basically individual business. And that business needs that revenue to, to be profitable. So they do want, they certainly want the additional carriers. It won't be for lack of desire if no additional carriers come off. And they usually do. There's usually going to be, you know, the, we will want some of that cost amortized. If we're going to lease to somebody else, then we would want to bake in some of that cost for the facility to make sure that it's makes sense, but it, it would not be disadvantageous for the carrier. It would work, you know, the numbers would work to where it would be worth it if they have a coverage need in the area. Just because there's a coverage need doesn't mean all these carriers are willing to do it for business purposes. I mean, it seems pretty populated here. So generally that's what drives the need for a site. If there's a gap in coverage or gap in capacity and there's people, subscribers, that usually equates to putting a site up. There's obviously like any large business, there's a lot going on, budgets, you know, quarterlies, profits, those kind of things.
I know that we've had discussions, um, was it a year ago, Jody, with T-Mobile? Last year, I, I introduced some T-Mobile folks to, I think when Mark was on. I don't know who on staff was having those conversations, but I, but I know that there is interest. Does that make a difference at all in terms of?
Yeah, the modeling.
Folks who are thinking maybe, you know.
It makes a difference to us when we're deciding whether or not we're going to build. If not just Verizon, but we have to, we want to see usually that the other carriers are also probably going to be interested or there might be the need there. That does go into the modeling when you're projecting the cost out for, because these things are obviously super expensive. You know, they, they take a lot of time to repay from the, the lease rates that we're getting.
Do you start that recruiting process now before it's up? So that's already started? You've reached out to AT&amp;T?
I don't know if they wait until there's, um, a firm building permit or I'm not quite sure what stage they do that, but they probably are. You know, the sooner the better. From the carrier's perspective, like even to build this, even to get to this stage, we have to have a firm commitment from Verizon. And we usually like to have a, a lease also with the landowner already in place. Sometimes we'll do the lease and the zoning concurrently just to save time, but you know, that's a bit of a risk too, because if you're getting down, you're spending a bunch of money on the zoning and the planning and you don't have a lease. Or if the landowner knows that you don't have a lease and that you're getting far in zoning, that's a good leverage point for them to use that to their advantage, which, um, obviously happens a lot.
So my last question is related to the effect. So, so you mentioned that this tower can help reduce capacity from other towers, right? So does that cascading effect keep going? So how, how far does that go? Because we have other areas in the city.
Right, probably just, just the adjacent towers.
Okay.
You know, you'd get it from those adjacent towers that it's offloading, but any positive effects beyond that, I don't think. I'm not, you know, that could send a radio frequency. But yeah, I don't believe that it has a cascading effect in that regard. You know, these things always have to hand signals off seamlessly. That's what they're doing when you're talking or you're streaming as you're hitting one point to the next, that's the tower talking to the next tower. Basically telling it when to switch the signal to the next tower. So that helps. That, this tower than the adjacent towers, that's going to be more seamless. But beyond that, I don't know how much, uh, effect. I mean, the network is a whole entity in of itself, you know, it's a living, breathing network and it gets better overall by the addition of sites. Why not just build infinite sites would be the next question, but that obviously they're expensive. And there has to be some, uh, you know, modeling for how much it costs to do that.
I guess I'm, my hope is that staff is rallying you because we have other areas in the city that could use towers. Southwest.
Well, let, yeah, let me know what they, specifically those areas are. I'll at least make sure that they get to our people. I mean, that's what SBA does. They build towers as infrastructure. The actual carriers now, they don't, they rarely even build sites. New ones, that is. Most of these towers are owned by tower companies. Cause you know, Verizon builds it, they may not have the same, um, desire to have T-Mobile and AT&amp;T on their tower. It offsets some of the costs, but there's also, you know, the competitive factor. So it's pretty much the model now is all, uh, tower companies, infrastructure providers, three giant ones and then other tower companies that do more speculative type of deals. They've got a little more tolerance for risk, some of the smaller companies. The SBA though is one of the huge tower companies.
Thank you.
Other questions? Thank you for being here.
Yeah, thank you.
As stated at the outset of the concept plan review, counselor comments are gratuitous and do not bind the, or obligate the applicant, city staff, the planning commission or city council to any course of action or future decision. Next? The next item is a concept plan review for Northridge at Park Center Senior Housing. This is a concept plan review. It is not a hearing on a development application. Its purpose is to allow city council to learn about a proposed project in its beginning stages and provide feedback to the applicant on city council's general impressions of the proposal. In accordance with the Westminster Municipal Concept Plan Reviews occur after city staff complete the pre-application review for a proposed project, but before staff perform a technical review for the project. Technical review, which involves an official application for the ODP, PDP or amendment thereto will occur only if the applicant chooses to move a project forward after its concept plan review. As part of our review process tonight, city staff will provide a brief introduction. And then the applicant or its representative will present an overview of the applicant's development proposal. City council may then ask questions of the applicant and provide the applicant feedback on the proposal. City council comments on the proposal are gratuitous in nature and are not binding on city council, the planning commission, city staff or the applicant. Welcome.
Thank you again. So this is the, uh, concept plan review for Northridge at Park Center Senior House. Project location is on the southwest corner of West one hundred and twenty-second Avenue and Park Center Drive outlined in red. The zoning of the property is planned unit development. It's about six point eight acres. Uh, it's designated employment flex in the twenty forty conference of plan and of course is part of the greater employment center of Parks. The proposal would include a hundred and twenty-two independent senior living, wholesale market rate condominium residential units. And the density proposed is eighteen dwelling units per acre. The proposal includes three residential buildings, a clubhouse and associated site improvement. For the applicant to pursue this, they would, uh, require the approval of a comprehensive plan amendment. Again, it's employment flex. It would have to be redesignated to a residential medium density. I mean, I'm sorry, suburban multifamily and, uh, preliminary development plan amendment to, to change the land uses from, uh, flex and employment land uses to residential uses. and employment land uses to residential uses in an official development plan to approve the site-specific development plan. The preliminary staff analysis recognizes that the, as noted earlier, the site's currently designated employment flex. The 2040 comprehensive plan is identified in Chapter 8 as the Park Center Transition Area in, in Section 8.3 titled Employment Places. So it was very intentional that this land was designated as such. Compliance with the comprehensive plan is required by Section 1132C of the Westminster Municipal Code. The suburban multifamily, which would allow the proposed density, has three locational criteria. This mandatory in the comprehensive plan. It has to be located along an arterial street, adjacent to transit, and within or near activity centers. So suburban multifamily allows senior housing as a secondary land use, but not as a primary land use. So in some, the, this location can't meet the criteria that's required for the council to be designated as suburban multifamily. And as noted in more detail in the agenda memo, staff will be presenting city council with an opportunity in the very near future to consider some minor comprehensive plan cleanups. And, and this would be in the next couple of months or so, as soon as we can get it prepared for you. But several of the proposed amendments are intended to more adequately address the need for additional senior housing development, which is a priority identified in the recent Housing Needs Assessment. So we want to make sure that we give you an opportunity to consider adjustments to the comp plan relative to the Housing Needs Assessment. If approved by city council, the proposed amendments would facilitate adjustments needed to make this site available for consideration for the comp plan if you choose. Public notice was provided for this concept plan review. There were three signs posted on the property, notice in the newspaper, and over 450 notices mailed. That concludes the staff's presentation. Our applicant is here to provide you with their presentation.
Welcome.
Thank you. Well, suffice it to say, thank you for allowing us to be in front of you this evening, and really appreciate John's introduction. I promised to be succinct, because I'm sure all of you are tracking that, whether that you mentioned there, Mr. Andrews. So I want to just start by saying that as a former 14-year-plus resident here in Westminster, really honored to be representing my client. Our client is a two-ownership team, and they have been very, very longtime residents here of Westminster. So I want to just sort of mention how excited we are, as John had mentioned here, to propose attainable for-sale independent senior housing on the site. Site, as mentioned, 6.8 acres. We see this as a really strong transitional site. That transitional site bordering the employment flex, but more importantly, direct connectivity to the open space to the west. We have envisioned the project at this point, as John mentioned, as 122 units, both one- and two-bedroom units, and with 146 parking stalls. Parking particularly located such that we are framing views with these three buildings. One of the things that we really tried to focus on was cut-fill analysis. And so the grading plan shows how the buildings not only meet a balanced site, but also allow the structures to step down the hillside and really maintain solid views from the adjacent neighborhoods, in particular to the school, just to, to our south. Let me spend a couple minutes here and just sort of talk a little bit about the illustrative plan first. Again, three, three-story buildings with a clubhouse, exterior and interior amenities. We think that these three-story buildings are really appropriately scaled, much smaller than some of the recent precedent projects in the immediate area in terms of other multifamily. And again, we think that this sort of combination of three stories with buildings essentially reaching out towards that hillside and framing views is just a terrific transitional use between the open space and some of the employment flex. Their vision was really to create, again, an opportunity for seniors in this community to have attainable housing. And they're very, very passionate about it. This is actually their, their second attempt to go through an amendment process here with the city. What we're seeing in that second aerial up at the upper right is just a representation of a view, elevated view from that open space to the west, showing how the buildings really do sort of naturally fit along that hillside and step down, step down the hill. Images three and four show what we believe to be a really high level of quality of materials. We also emphasize that we wanted the buildings to have a strong residential character. So you're seeing gabled roof forms, you're seeing the ability to articulate window sizes and really have a strong base to the project in particular. We, at this point, are requesting no variances. So we understand that we've got a lot of guidelines to follow. We have gone through the process with the city a few times. Really been actually blessed to be a client of, have the city as a client of ours. And so we understand very well the ODP and PDP process. And again, at this point, really working with John and Andrew Spurgeon so far, we are not anticipating variances. Very, very excited to allow you all to consider the opportunity to provide attainable for-sale independent senior housing on the site. And again, I promised I'd be succinct. As an architect, I could ramble on, but I'm, I'm going to try to, to hold it here and allow you all to ask some questions. And again, thank you so much for this opportunity.
Mayor Protem? I recall working.
Hello. Nice to see you, Mayor Protem.
You too. Did the Westminster station door?
Yes, ma'am. Nice to reconnect.
Yeah. So I know this area very well. My kids used to go to this school just to the south. That's the academy, first and K through second. So my questions are less about the project itself, because I think the scale and the design right now are looking good. I think the land use, certainly, we've had this area identified as employment since at least the 2003 comp plan. It hasn't moved for over 20 years. And so I think this may be a compatible use. We have the Brody that's just to the left, on the very south end of that image.
Correct.
So, yeah, I think it is a good transition and use, plus the ownership component adds another element to it that I think we all appreciate. So the only issue for me is more about the traffic. I, and normally I'm, I'm kind of copacetic with traffic. It is what it is. But I am very concerned about just the traffic along, what is that, Park Center Drive? That because students cross over from the DeVry Parents' Park, there was a terrible accident there, I think it was last year, with a small child. And because people, regardless of all the precautions that are out there on that road, because of that connection and parking and crossing need, it just puts kids at risk. And so honestly, it's more for staff. You know, what does the traffic study look like? Are there accommodations? And I just, again, am worried about building up more pressure on the, you know, during the school hour timeframes. I, I lived at, I think my kids were there for five, six years perpetually. So I truly understand what it's like to be a parent and a kid, you know, a kid attending that school. And I, not the best scenario. So that's, that's one question, a major concern I have, and I really want to understand how that's being addressed. And then the only other question is understanding the open space dedication component. I know that was an element with the Brody, and I know that, I think they put the, the open space next to the site.
I believe you're correct. There was some land dedication with the Brody.
And so I'm assuming this would all be just a payment and lieu?
That's a conversation that we haven't had yet. The applicant is aware of the public land dedication requirement. Their site plan is not currently showing any physical dedication, so we would be in fee-and- lieu territory likely. We'll have to engage other city departments, such as PR&amp;L, to see if there's a need to expand the open space there, the trail system. And we'll provide that advice during the process and make a recommendation to you all.
Okay, random thought. Just on the south side of the property, I know there's a bit of a hill. So I don't know to what extent there might be some opportunity to expand parking for the school and kind of make some sort of trade, but I'd so much rather have, you know, the reduction of parking across the street, and maybe that's a way to resolve a couple of different things. Okay, thanks.
Counselor Island?
So I've been reading about what those that are living in their houses for a long time and what they really want. And I don't know if we're providing that. I'm, I'm almost there myself. And I live in a larger family home. And seniors want space still. They want three bedrooms, not one bedroom. They want, they want outdoor space of their own. They don't want to share the outdoor space. I'm not seeing it in what we're providing in our city. And so I would like to see it more of a townhouse instead of a condo for sale with open space, some space for them, have a little garden or whatever. And, you know, like three bedrooms so their family can come visit. We're not providing that in our city. And that's what I'm looking for when I, when I downsize. So that's, and to change it from flex office to more senior housing that people aren't really looking for, that's my problem with it, because, you know, you got to look at down the line. Do we need more jobs? Do we need more space for that? And I hate to change the, the plan in the middle of it if it's not something I feel like people really want. So that's my two cents.
I would agree and disagree. I was going to comment similarly with, with what Counselor Island said, is that I like this very much because it is for sale, and that's what I've heard, is that what we want. And I think that she's correct in the diversification. And so maybe in the future, I do think townhomes is a good idea. And then, of course, I know that we already are aware that we need affordable senior housing, and this does not fall into that bracket either. So I am just saying, let's keep in mind, you know, wide diversity of housing. That said, the demand is there. And so I guess I just ask that our staff is aware, and hopefully there are other opportunities within our city for other... I just wish that I knew whether or not we have that potential before I approve or not this plan. Are there other spaces in our city possibly? And of course, we don't know who will come to us, but is there the potential to have larger-sized senior living homes somewhere before I, before we approve something and take up that, all that space?
Counselor Demont?
Just real quick, to jog my memory, this is a question for staff. The product on Huron and 126?
128.
28th? That's essentially exactly what they're both mentioning, right? I mean, because I finally, I was excited to see that last time I drove down Huron, they're actually starting to sprout up, and those were more duplex, like patio home kind of product that's supposed to be like active senior area, if I remember and right.
You are correct. It's not actively marketed as senior housing, but it's certainly conducive to a downsizing senior population. It's a single-floor paired homes. The, all the yards are commonly owned and maintained, so there's no outside maintenance that's done. So it's certainly conducive for that demographic, and the developer did recognize that.
I seem to recall that there was some sort of legal challenge around why they didn't market it as such, but it was. There was part of the conversation when, when it came through, and I can't remember when that came through. I feel like there was probably some different faces at the table when it did. But, so I appreciate that, because I don't disagree. Like, I mean, part of what our housing study has said is the different kinds. So like, this fits a particular demographic if it springs up. And it kind of reminds me of the one that was supposed to happen on 108 that I don't think is happening. And I know people who thought that was happening, my parents being some of them, and then found out it wasn't happening. So, you know, I don't disagree that some folks don't want that, but some do. Is, like, in on that vein, is there, like, what kind of programming and stuff will this? Do they, are they down that road yet, as far as like, you know, what kind of things would be available for the seniors who buy here? In terms of programming and, you know, amenities and gym and all that kind of stuff that people would be looking for if they wanted to purchase there?
Yeah, great question. The ownership is admittedly fairly preliminary in some of those discussions. Yet, the plan right now does show a fairly robust amenity package. The amenity package, both being interior and exterior. We do see actually fitness opportunities, both in the pool, clubhouse, so definitely active. But a lot of programming that these gentlemen have run other very successful projects like this in nearby states. And again, they've been here in Colorado for a long time. So we feel like some of their history and some of the ability to help program the appropriate types of spaces in the, in the program that's already been designed will certainly be there. I can't talk specifically to the nature of those programs, but they're really cognizant that that's a big part of this delivery.
That's fine. I, I guess my point would be is to kind of hit on the same tone in terms of, I do think, you know, it may not address the size concern that Counselor Island has, but I have heard similar, like, as far as like programming and the ability to be social. I think that's what folks, when they're looking to, you know, retire in one of these communities, they want to make sure that there's ability to socialize with, you know, their community members. So whatever that's worth, as you go down that road, that would be my recommendation for them to look at.
Great, thank you.
The age restricted?
They do expect that it would be age restricted, yes, sir.
Fifty-five.
Fifty-five, yes, sir.
Yeah, no, I think this is great, especially being a for-sale model, because what it does is it helps open up, we don't have a lot of housing stock. And it opens up some of that housing stock when there are ways that affordable or market-rate ways that people can downsize, and it opens up those family homes or families. So I think this is, I think this is great and very needed.
Counselor Scotty?
I love it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Did I see your hand again?
Yeah, I was just going to say, I agree that we need the different types of housing, and we've done a great job building single-family. But I, I do think that the, hopefully, the one-story condo product is, I do think that is something that we need as well. So just wanted to put a plug in for that, and this is, we don't have a lot of this. Especially ownership.
Counselor Camellion?
I was going to add, not necessarily the city might be running these programs, but there is opportunity for a development like this to be next to a school. Just thinking about those, those interactive possibilities that we could be catering to, maybe in our youth advisory panel, bringing it up. advisory panel, bringing it up, if they wanted to go to the elementary school and, you know, help the kids go over to senior center and read to them, or et cetera. So I just wanted to put that out there, if we want to help any of the rec centers do programs or do some integration there, that's healthy for, although this is not, my head's kind of, these are going to be owned, but there still might be possibility.
I would certainly love to see garden plots or something so that people, if they don't have their own backyards, that you do that over at East Bay. They have a great area in back that nobody can see, that people that want to have their own little plot, and so many of them get together if you have women and/or men that are widowed, and they don't need a huge plot, so they'll work with another person that lives in the area, and they take turns taking care of it or work together, but they grow what each one likes and share. That just creates community, too. As far as sizes, I know one bedroom for some people, maybe, but even for us, we'd need a three, because I have to have a craft room. I would go crazy if I didn't. And so, and I didn't hear you say, I only heard you say one or two bedrooms, so.
And I should clarify, Mayor, the program at this point does anticipate two-bedroom plus, so a two-bedroom den type of a scenario, and absolutely appreciate the outdoor comments that were made by a couple members of council this evening, as well as yourself. Ownership is all in on that and really believes, really, some of the genesis of the orientation of the buildings is set to allow that community type of involvement, and love that you're a supporter of that as well. It's going to be a big part of this program for sure.
I have to go to my plot, clear up to St. Anthony North, because they have 24 plots up there, so that's where I go garden, but because the trees overgrew in my yard. That's what we do. I get caught every NADA meeting in what you're talking about. And sometimes we don't even make the roundabout to be able to turn in, or I can't get through the roundabout to enter DeVry at the other end so I can get to my meeting. But for staff, the really horrible intersection is there at 122nd and Zuni and/or Federal, whichever it is at that point in time, because you take your life in your hands trying to make a left-hand turn. When I leave DeVry, I will go up to Pagos to get out because they have a lot. I will, I unfortunately, last meeting, went this way and probably sat there 10 minutes trying to get out, because people are going way too fast, and there's just not a break. That's, that's the one, I think, trying to figure out something for that school, and obviously, nine months of the year, but, and it is only certain hours, it's first thing in the morning and when they let out, but it, it can back up enough that those people wouldn't be able to get out, and it backs up to that roundabout and starts backing people up that are coming in from Zuni, Federal, and making that right-hand turn, and everybody's at gridlock.
You're, you're right, because my memory is like the, your, your queuing for drop-off is along Park Center and in front of your entrance. Yeah.
So those are the things I personally deal with right now, and so that they would, I mean, I don't know, any of them would be leaving at 7:30 in the morning, 7:30 in the morning, but it's a...
I remembered something, which is elevators. Are we going to plan to have elevators, either inside or outside?
Yes. Elevators planned, yes.
Okay, just wanted to confirm that, because we've had things built before for senior centers that were not.
Oh, gosh.
Anything else? Thank you so much for sharing your vision.
Thank you so much. Appreciate this. Thank you, John, as well. We'll see you soon. Okay.
As stated at the outset of the concept plan review, councilor comments are gratuitous and do not bind or obligate the applicant, city staff, the planning commission, or city council to any course of action or future decision. Everybody drive safely home and have a nice, quiet day tomorrow.
Where are you headed?
Thank you. Thank you, John.